At 7:07, we'll call the Tuesday, March 19th, 2024 Planning Commission Meeting to order. Can we have a roll?
Do you want to do pledge first?
I was gonna do that, but I was looking. I was about to say, we have no clerk.
No calder.
Don't worry. I'll do the roll afterwards.
If we can stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam filling clerk.
All right, let's go with Commissioner Hammond.
Here.
Commissioner Tamarelli.
Present.
Commissioner Stansberry.
Here.
Commissioner Dizik. Commissioner Scusell.
Here. Scusell.
All right.
Scusell, bustle, tussle, rustle.
I'll get it in my head. And Fobbs, who's not here. You have a quorum, sir.
Do we know is Commissioner Fobbs coming?
We do not know that.
Make a motion to excuse Commissioner Fobbs.
Second.
We move to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Before we move on, I think our temporary clerk can let us know that we lost our, one of our planning commissioners.
We did. I received notice just before the meeting that unfortunately Commissioner McClure has resigned from her seat. She had some work conflicts, it sounds like, so it's disappointing, of course. But that'll be out and posted again, so it'd be great to get somebody that's got some, some planning architectural or engineering experience on, on this board, right? So stay tuned, and if you know anybody you think would be a fantastic fit, please let me know and we'll get an application out to them.
Thank you. Does everyone have a copy of the agenda?
Mm-hmm.
Do we make a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I move.
Second.
Second.
We move to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Does everyone have, excuse me, a copy of the minutes from the prior meeting? Are there any changes or corrections to the minutes? If not, we can have a motion to accept the minutes from the meeting of February.
Second.
We move to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? There are none. And motion carries. We will open this up for a public comment regarding the agenda as presented. If there's anyone here to have something from the public regarding the agenda as presented. Okay. Close that. We do not have any old business or table items, which moves us on to new business, which is the 2024 to 2029 Capital Improvement Plan Draft, otherwise known as the CIP Draft.
Yes.
Yes, sir. So in your packets, good evening, by the way, in your packets, you have the draft version of this year's CIP, which is the period from 2024 to 2029. The first few pages of the report are pretty much standard in terms of introduction, what a CIP is, the capital improvement plan. That explains the process. So tonight, we're, we're presented with the, the draft for the first time. So this is just a compilation of departments that had indicated what their priorities are. Normally, we're supposed to receive a ranking. We didn't get that for most of the departments this time of round. However, we did have that indicated for the Department of Public Services, so we can go over that in just a second. Otherwise, in addition to what the CIP is, and just some background on the process, you have the program areas which start on page 13 and 14 of the report, and then just the project inventory synopsis starting on page 17. So starting with the administrative, every item that has an asterisk next to it is an item that's new for the CIP. So as you can see, under administrative, the city hall drinking fountain replacement and city, or facility condition and needs assessment are the two items that were determined for the administrative department. And then following that is the Department of Public Services. This department did rank the items for their CIP. The top three that were indicated were the pickup truck, which is item number 15. The second item of preference is backhoe tractor, which is item 10, and then item six is the third furnace replacement. So new to this list is the top item, number one, the 2011 GMC pickup and plow assembly. As you flip through to the back of the packet, each one of those items is broken down, so you can get a brief description of what that entails. And then the far column on the right is the total amount that is allocated for each one of the items. So we can go through these more in detail, but moving along to the next page is the continuation of the DDA.
Eric, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Yes? I was writing, and I didn't write this.
Oh.
The third item, you said was item number three? The epoxy floor?
Six.
Number six.
Oh, number six.
Yeah, so I was just giving the top three.
My mistake.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
So just to reiterate.
That's good. Continue.
Okay.
Yep.
So that's the Department of Public Services. And then it's moving on to the DDA. On the top of page 18, the new items in asterisks are items six, seven, six and seven, which are the alley improvements. The police, we don't have any new items for police or roads. However, the majority of those are for 2024, but as you can see, some are 2025 through 2029. And then for roads, you know, there's, like, the Lincoln Drive East reconstruction is 2026, and then there's some 2027 dates marked there as well. The last few departments are sanitary sewer and water. On page 19, there's no new items, so it's essentially just the carryover from previous CIPs. And then the last part of the report, starting on page 16, is the breakdown of each one of the items within the department. So if you had a chance to look over any of that, or if you have any questions on that, Suzie's, the DDA was tasked with receiving the information. We processed the information to include in the report. So otherwise, what you see before you is what was given from each one of the departments. And if need be, we can look at the prioritization ranking within each one of those to get a better understanding of which items are at the top of the rankings for each department. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So I have a question about, since you mentioned the pickup truck as priority for DPS. So ranked item number four is for a plow assembly for the existing pickup truck? And then ranked item number two, was it two?
Two is backhoe.
Two is the backhoe.
Three is.
I think it's item number one. The DPS truck is in poor condition and needs a replacement. The pickup truck, plow ready. So I imagine that they're planning to use this plow assembly on either the existing truck or a replacement truck, depending on what gets approved by the council. Is that the plan?
Yes, that, the plow assembly is to outfit there. I think it's a 2014 truck that they've been using, and this would allow them to use that truck and add it to that rotation of vehicles that are plowing streets during the winter.
Yes, but if they also replace, sorry, if they purchase a new pickup truck, which is item number one, is that an additional pickup truck for DPS or replacement?
See, item number one is a plow assembly.
Yeah, number, number one is the plow assembly. So, I'm sorry. So that is to add to the 2014 truck or whatever it is. To add that into the rotation. Item number 15, the pickup truck, plow ready, that is a new truck. That is to replace the Fred, what I affectionately call is the Fred Flintstone truck. So.
Okay, so they have two pickup trucks. Let's replace one of them.
Yeah.
Got it. Thank you. But it's plow ready, which means they could use this plow assembly in either the old one or the new one.
Yes.
The DDA has multiple additional alleyway improvement projects for future years?
Yes.
As well as the one for the current year, yes?
Correct. Yep, we put together, when the, when the city was undertaking all of their infrastructure projects and starting to plan out that, the DDA also put together a five-year alley and approach improvement plan. And so these are just those remaining years that we've, that we've been planned out for.
Okay.
What goes into an alleyway improvement?
I, well, it depends, one, on the condition, right? I mean, they're all, we, we went through and we did a PESA rating for all of the alleys, right? And that's the same, it's a, I don't know what the acronym stands for, but it's like a pavement assessment, right? And says, you know, 10 is perfect, like literally, you just paved it, and it, it only stays a 10 for six months. And then it goes down to a nine, right? And then one is like gravel, right? Most of our, and most of our roads and alleys kind of fall into that, like three, four, five, right? So we did that PESA rating a few years ago when we first did, started planning for the improvements. If it's the lower the rating, usually it's reconstruction. Like last year, we reconstructed the, the alleyway behind Skyway Travel. So the original plans for that were rip up the alley. We were gonna rip out all of the, the 10-inch aggregate base, add new base, then pave over it, you know, do the two layers of pavement. In that particular instance, we found that the subsurface condition was actually pretty good, so we did not have to replace the aggregate base, right? And we were able to just kind of pave over top of it. We are going to be, the two that, I think we're doing two this year, those will be reconstructed, right? And that is, so we will be removing all of the pavement, removing that ag, ag base, putting new aggregate base in there and replacing with concrete.
And average, I'm like, so it says $300,000 basically. How much alley does 300,000 dollars replace?
I think that's about two full alleys and this, like, two full alleys plus, so there's two alleys, four approaches, and I think in these, we have extra approaches. Our approaches generally need more work than the alleys, right? So this, and this should get us to almost entirely redone with the alleys over the course of five years. We've been spending just shy of 200,000 for the last few years to get the alleys done, and we've done at least one full alley and for, at least one full alley and at least four full approaches the last couple of years. I'm sure it's more than that. I just can't pull that data out of my brain right now.
In the water section, item 24-09 for 2026, just over a million dollars for water main replacement?
Wait, which one was that? I'm sorry.
W-24-09.
Okay.
Does that budgetary number include the funding that we got from Congress?
Nope.
Okay, so where is that represented in this CIP?
I don't think that's represented in there at the moment as like a funding source, right? Actually, let's see.
So it'd be planned to be used towards the 2024 water main replacement project or the 2025 water main replacement project, or potentially both?
Potentially both, but that's probably about our question for the city administrator and how he wants to split that up. We did just get that announcement, right? So, which is one reason why it's not reflected in here. I'm inclined to say that'll probably be '25, '26, just based on when we're able, when they give us the funding, right? But again, that's a lot, that, that'll be a question for the city administrator for specifically.
I'm just glad to see, like, that each of these yearly projects has a specific intent, right? Specific roads, the 2024 project is supposed to deal with water mains. It rose land of Vila, Redwood and Catalpa. 2025 is 696 South, sorry, south of 696. And 2026 is east of Southfield Road from Lincoln to 11 Mile. So it's very targeted, and that's, that's good. And people who live in those neighborhoods can be, expect potential disruptions, assuming these projects get funded by council. But they'll have improved water main services as a result, so.
Yep, everything, and I'm sure you've ever seen the city engineers' pretty colorful maps. I mean, everything's done to improve, improve the flow and to make sure that we can fight those, fight whatever potential fires may, may happen, make sure everybody's got good water pressure, all the good things about that. So good coverage.
Okay.
I have a few questions. The replacement of water fountains, AD 2402, four aged wall-mounted drinking fountains throughout the city, include three fountain bottle filling stations. Are the water fountains inoperable?
No, they function.
They cool that water?
Yes.
I mean, it's not just, comes out of the, I mean, it's, the refrigeration works?
I believe so.
Okay.
I'll be honest, I don't use them, but, but yes, and I think it's just, you know, we don't have those bottle, bottle refilling, you know, I think it's just to bring us.
Little bit of an upgrade.
Little bit of an upgrade. Bring us closer to the 21st century.
Sure. The zero-turn lawnmower and the tow-behind leaf blowers. Tow-behind leaf blowers, it says there's three units. One of them has passed its useful life and currently out of service. Do you know what has it out of service?
I do not know what has it out of service. I know that a lot of the equipment over at DPS is in general need of constant maintenance during the season. Like, I know that's the big issue with their lawnmower now, is that it's just continually needs to be tuned and tweaked, you know, throughout the weeks and seasons.
I mean, those zero, okay, so I used to have a, a property with acreage and a zero-turn lawnmower, and, I mean, it's a commercial lawnmower. Do you have any idea how many hours of use are on that lawnmower?
I do not.
And do you know if the engine's been replaced or remanufactured? You know, I mean, as a city that is challenged for money, I'm just thinking of some ulterior thing, alternative things for both of those. If the motors are in need of repair, maybe we can get a remanufactured motor or a replacement motor. You know, I think a zero-turn lawnmower motor is significantly less than $10,000 if the rest of it operates. I mean, if the mower, you know, and a lot of that's driven by the number of hours of use. You know, commercial lawnmowers will often do 1,000 hours a year. Is it 10,000 hours are on the mower? That's something that should be looked at?
And I, I don't know the answer to those questions, but.
Yeah, no, just some general.
We can certainly, certainly pose these to the administrator, see, see what he can.
Yeah.
What he can inform us.
Yeah, and it says in here, seven years, but your point, like, who knows how many hours each of those years?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I use mine 60 hours a year, and the guy told me you got 10,000 hours on the engine. So I thought, well, if I'm here for 50 years, I'm probably okay.
Right.
So, you know, just, it's not, you know, just, let's make sure the i's are dotted and t's are crossed.
Sure.
Did you have a concern about the leaf blower also?
Well, same thing. I just, is it just, what kind of repairs needed?
The one thing I know about the leaf blower is that we did have at least one or maybe two gaps in street-side leaf pickup because the, the toe-behind leaf blower broke, right? And like sat on streets waiting for it to be repaired.
Yeah.
Eventually got repaired, and then they got the job done. But like, it's every year, it gets more and more challenging for them to keep old Bessie working.
Yeah, it's just a cost benefit thing, right?
Yeah, sure.
We spend $8,000 a year repairing it, and a new one's $10,000. You know, those kind of would be helpful on this document. I think we've talked about that in the past. Maybe it's not supposed to go here, but.
Yeah, I mean, the decisions about the actual assignment of budget are gonna go to the council. So the, the CIP is just like, here is a wish list. And what we think it's gonna cost, right? But to your point, when their council's making decisions about how to allocate these funds, it will be helpful for them to have information.
They're gonna look at the same thing, and they're gonna say, hopefully they say. The parks and recreation, there's some, some big money going for parks, which I think is kind of cool. There's one mention of a Senator Peters grant of some sort. Is that new, and did we know about that?
All right, that is, so I will say the, the, the extra, the extra money allocated towards the Sarek Wood and Golden Gate, honestly, that was Mr. Dizik's idea last year. He, he pointed out that the paltry $100,000 that I had thrown in there was peanuts and not gonna get me much more than maybe a slide. And boy, how you were right, sir. So I, I, I up that to be at least a little bit more realistic, right? I mean, that's, that is the point of the wish list. It should be realistic, or at least based in reality, right? So that's, that's the deal with that. The Senator Peters one, no, that's, no, you didn't know about that. That was an opportunity that just came, came, that we just came upon to try and secure funds for municipal park. We're trying to, you know, trying to find the different ways, so.
More on that later?
Yeah, I mean, stay tuned. We literally just applied. I mean, we probably, maybe we shouldn't have put Senator Peters in there as like a grant source, bada! You know, we're feeling encouraged, right?
Okay.
So.
The application was sent by the city to Senator Peters and Congresswoman Tilly last week.
Yeah.
Cool.
Last two days.
Good.
Keep your fingers crossed.
So when it says grant, that's a wish rather than a?
Yes.
It's the actual source of funding.
Or, and/or, like, that's the mechanism that we're gonna pursue. I mean, I, I guess it's still a wish, right?
Rather than community fundraising or something.
Right, like, that'll be the primary mechanism, right? So.
I had a couple more. Bear with me here. I think that's it. One comment. In the water area in the, the text description, I found it confusing when you talked about how many fire hydrants and gate valves and the age of them were needed. And then right below it, there were a couple of statistics of ones that, how many we've replaced. And I thought it could be clearer if you just said, you know, we've got 200 gate valves, we've replaced 50, there's 150 more that could be considered, of which we're looking to do 50. I, I had to do a lot of mental math, and maybe it was late at night, and I was beyond me, I don't know.
I like the idea of having something like a table.
Yeah, it just.
That kind of outlines the total number of each one of these components, how many of them were placed in each of the last couple of years.
Table, yeah.
That would be helpful to illustrate more easily.
I don't, yeah, I'll leave it at that. I won't do any editorial. I just think a table would be clearer, and then you could see, okay. And we're gonna take 50% in the next three years and replace, whatever.
Too many words.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's just kind of all over the map.
Okay.
It would be helpful.
That's just for water, right?
That was, yeah.
Because there's so many different components of the water program, it's.
Are there any other sections?
The water mains, the, the hydrants and the gate valves. You know, there's 30, 33 miles or 150,000 feet, and we've, you know, some of these are 1920, and some are these. And then, well, we've replaced some here, and we've done some here, and like I say, I was trying to think, well, how much is left? So that would be helpful.
Would it only, only for the water, though? It's not the same for like paving or any of those.
No.
Okay.
I mean, something like that could potentially be helpful in the road section as well to outline, you know, the number of miles of road, which ones are main roads and which ones are local roads, how many miles of each type of road has been refurbished as part of the infrastructure bond over the last several years, and how much if, we plan to do in the future. I think, yeah, that, that type of information just makes it easier for somebody reading this document to get the summary real quick.
Would you like to see that as, in addition to the text that's there?
No, just embedded in the body of the text.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, and there's a reason why that text is there, right? So it's like, have the paragraph that describes the gate valves, and then underneath it, a table that talks about the inventory of the gate valves in a table, and then the same thing for fire hydrants.
I, I left thinking we're missing some. And I, again, I don't have the, you know, 200 gate valve, we talked about the gate valves, and then some were replaced. And then I looked down, and there were some gate valves being replaced, but the two didn't add up to the total.
Okay.
You know, are there, just a quick table that summary summarizes to 100%.
Yeah, this information came right from the city engineer.
Yeah.
So we'll work with him to shore up all of that information to make it simplified.
Some version of it already exists somewhere in the project plans for the infrastructure projects that we're already doing, right? So it's just pulling it from there, putting it in the doc. I have a question for the commissioners. Does anybody feel like there's anything that's missing that maybe you've talked to a resident about or thought about on your own that isn't represented in here, that should be part of, it's got capital, right? So it's over $5,000, it's significant projects, it's, you know.
I can't think of anything off the top of my head.
I couldn't either, so.
Quick, so Eric, quick question, or just a quick question. Since all the communities across the state are required to identify the water service lines by October, how, do we have an idea how far we are with that? Because we're running out of time.
That's true. We, yeah.
At 15 a year, I know we're not.
Well.
But I'm just wondering, I know we're running out of time, and it's really not, I hate to say it this way, it's not the city's fault. We're running out of time. Have the residents actually done what they were supposed to do to let the city, to let the city know? Have they done the tests?
We have some, some residents have. We definitely could use a whole lot more, right? We still have that QR code with that, you have to scan the QR, do the, take your penny, your magnet, scratch it, and put it. We've got, we've got a couple, we've got, we've got, I wanna say between 200 and 300 that have been done. Um, we are required to do all of our households, right? So we still have about 1,200 households left to go. Um, this has been something that council has talked about, this council, the last council. Um, this is something that all the city administrators in the last few years have talked about. It would still be incredibly helpful for residents to, to go out there and do that, that test.
Do we know what happens?
I don't.
When we run out of time?
Not quite, not quite.
I mean, is there like some penalty, is there some, see, that, that my concern is, is that as a resident, there's 1,300 of us that haven't done anything. Well, all of us get stuck with the bill for the 13 that don't do. So my question is, is if there's a penalty, maybe it will be an incentive for the other 13.
That, right, that would be possible, um, I don't know what the penalty may be. I.
Well, the state, I mean, this is a state requirement, it's not like we have a choice, but.
Some sort of consent.
Yeah, I would say it would probably be, we'd be placed under a consent order, right?
That's a penalty.
It is, it's a penalty, I mean, I, but like, you know, are we gonna get a, are we gonna get a, a fine? I don't know, but I think a consent, consent orders are generally more like the stick that, that, the, you know, the, the state will, will hand out, right? And put us under a consent order, and we would have to, if that's what happens, um, you know, they would give us a deadline, but, okay, well, at your cost, you will need to go through and identify all of these service line materials by XYZ date, right? Maybe, maybe a penalty is that we're ineligible for funding at, for, through whatever state agency, right?
Yeah.
Maybe it's through Eagle, maybe it's through something else, right? And part of that is that these rules for this requirement, they change, right? I mean, it was, our, our deadline was actually December until like three months ago, and they said, oh, yeah, by the way, it's October 1st now.
Oh, okay.
So, I mean, that's changed, and even when the rules first came out, um, and we first started undertaking these projects, the rules changed within the first couple of months, right? Originally, we were, um, the state was saying that we had to identify every single household, interior and exterior. So everybody that had their front yards dug up, right? We did 352 of those. The original rules by the state would have had us ripping up 1,700 front yards. I'm really glad we didn't have to, right? Like, they changed their formulas, so, you know, they, they do change their rules from time to time, um.
Would that just look like works going from house to house and saying, hey, can I look at your meter?
I mean, that could be it, yeah.
Have we tried calling?
People?
Yeah, do we, do we have phone numbers for how many percent of the population?
The phone numbers that we have, that I am aware of, are primarily through that home, like, I use the Latham Village Homeowners Association directory from what, like, two years ago? That's, that is my main phone number source for Latham Village residents. No, we haven't tried calling, we just don't have the staff capacity to do that, um, to call and, and, and make those arrangements. You know, like, I, we have sent, for example, for the four dead-end water mains that are gonna be worked on this summer, right? There's approximately 30 people on those, on those short ends, right? So we sent a letter out a couple of weeks ago saying, hey, we really need you to fill out this, this survey. If you are not capable of filling out, you know, doing this, doing this identification, give us a call. We'll, we'll see about getting someone out there to help you do the test, it's like five minutes, right? We got a few takers, right? Generally, these are seniors that are, you know, they don't know what they're looking at, or maybe they can't get down into their basement, or maybe they've done those things, but they're still uncertain, maybe they can't, maybe they're not good with technology, right? Um, so there's been a variety of things.
So what percentage of the, the, the letters you sent out were responded to?
Uh, I've gotten two phone calls about residents wishing to set something up. I've not heard, I've not heard from anybody else, but I have, I did get an email from our GI, the GIS, um, person at Giffles, that's, you know, they, those tests, when you scan them, it goes all the hurt, right? She, I got an email earlier today, I think it was, we had three new responses, and I think we had a couple from late last week. So, I mean, we only had.
Seven out of how many letters?
Two or 30?
30.
Right, so, um, I mean, and we've talked, right, the council's talked about, oh, do we hire a, do we hire somebody to go out and schedule and do the, perform these tests? You know, that's a big, that's a big budget consideration, right? I mean, you're essentially hiring a contractor to do the work. There've been, I know, um, Ferguson and, and maybe Jason, you can fill us in on some of this too. I know council's been discussing, um, having Ferguson, they do our, the water meters, they gotta, they need to go out and do some work, and so they can also go and.
Piggyback on their work.
You know, add, just add it to their normal work order. Can you add more to that thought, or no?
No, that's right on, that's exactly the idea, is that Ferguson Water Works will be doing some work on water mains and, uh, service, uh, water meters and whatnot. Uh, I don't know the scope of the actual, probably, I mean, we have to put up the new receivers. So they're gonna be tasked with doing all that, while they're doing that around various parts of the city, we could in theory give them addresses for people that have not reported yet, and have them knock on their doors.
And we, we were, we had a nice, uh, we had a random find of some work orders from when the meters were put in back in the 90s, right? Um, and so we've been able to say, all right, we've got some pretty, we've got some data there. Um, and there were, there were ones I know that, um, the engineer wanted to have our DPS, you know, go and confirm, like, like, the, this, this work order says, you know, it's copper, but this resident has done the test, and theirs is showing lead or vice versa, right? So like, where's, where's this confidence level, right? And as part of that analysis, I mean, it was, it was very, it was a high percentage of, of confidence in those old work orders versus the information that we do have, right? So we're trying really hard to get as, like, find as much information as we have internally at the city to say, no, we don't, we, we know this is not a lead line or galvanized pipe, this is copper, it's just a heavy lift, right?
Any other questions regarding the CIP?
Nope.
Nope. This is the draft.
This is the draft. Our intent is to have the, uh, final document, we'll take all these comments, and have this final document for you in April. Um, I would like for, the motion I need from you all this evening is to set the public hearing for our April 16th meeting, um, with the intent of, uh, reviewing the final draft of the CIP in April, and then forwarding it on to city council for their adoption and inclusion as part of their budget process.
So we need a motion for a public hearing for the 16th of April for the CIP?
I move that we.
Okay. Go right.
Let's not fight over it here.
No, I'll second it for what it.
I move that we, uh, set the date for a public hearing on August 16th for the review of the CIP.
And I'll second it.
The move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those oppose, there you go. So we're all set for our public hearing on 16th?
Yes.
For CIP. Eric, you're all set?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
We'll have an update to that, um, and then with the public hearing, um, the updated packet.
You think you'll be able to get to the, uh, department people prior, just the, so for some of the comments that you got, prior to the 16th?
What, say that again?
Do you think that you'll make it to the department regarding some of the comments?
Yes, yeah, we'll have to work together in order to get, to get updates to that, yeah.
Item nine?
Well, I'm glad you're all looking at screened versions of your, of your, of this packet, because I didn't realize when I made my own packet, I printed it out, just like. It's no bueno, let me just say, it's no bueno, all right? But, um, I am happy to say that we're actually moving quite along, um, with these. Oh, we printed out all of there, now I'm understanding. Don't pay attention to the last few pages. So, uh, really, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven projects, and eight projects, um, in the works. Um, you'll see the first one, we're still, we're still working on that. That's still fence issue over there on Sunset, still working through that. Our friends next door, uh, at the laundromat, they have submitted, they submitted their, um, revised plans from, you know, that reflect the conditions that you put on them last, at the last meeting. We got those, they're looking good, and they will be applying for their building permits, um, I imagine by the end of this week.
Great.
Um, so we should start seeing some, some movement in action over there, April, right? We also, for Oakland Development 26, 27601, um, they, if you recall, that's where the, that's where the old Panera is, um, and they obtained site plan approval back in the fall. They've been, they've reached out and said, hey, what do we need for our building permits? So I would imagine we're gonna start seeing, we're gonna start seeing all the action, right? Um, now that can, now that it's finally actually real warm, right? We still have construction going on at the meds, the, the new med spa, the former DiMaggio, right? Again, that one didn't come back, didn't come to you, um, because that was administrative review. Jay Birds is going full steam ahead, the, they've, they've been working on their interior improvements. Um, I will find out when, when they will be open, I imagine it'll be about a month, but, um, I will find out for Mr. Brown when that will be. And then Papa's Pizza, you know, just as an FYI, they did, uh, they were denied their sign variance at the council meeting a couple of weeks ago. Um, I know they had indicated at that time that they were intending to appeal that decision to circuit court. I don't know the status of that, um, we're, you know, we're kind of out of it at this, you know, at this point. They either comply or they appeal, so, um, and following that council meeting, I did speak to city attorney Baker, and, um, he has, uh, he's indicated, and I have relayed this to the property owners for Papa's, that they need to go through site plan review, right? Um, whether that is administrative or whether that comes before you remains to be seen, right? They were given a deadline that has since passed, and so now I'm working with the city attorney and city administrator on the next step, right? Um, and then for, and it's not on here because it just didn't, they didn't submit in time for me to get this on there, but, uh, BP will, did submit a special land use application, uh, late on Friday. They are hoping to sell liquor at, at the gas station. So, um, that will be set for a public hearing also in April, so they have two public hearings in April, you know, to consider and make your recommendation on that one, so, um, I feel like there was another one. Don't we have another one? Oh, I have talked to, uh, up near the bartending school. I've had some conversations, um, with prospective tenants up there. So we may be having another, you know, administrative or site plan review come, come down this way. And I'm cautiously optimistic, we're gonna have a handful more projects coming down the pipe, so. But that's everything I have for you gentlemen tonight.
Great. Jason, is there anything from council, under general communication?
Is there anything from the council?
Just in general.
Yeah, Councilman Cantor is having office hours tomorrow here at city hall in the conference room, uh, down the hall from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM. So any residents who are interested in having a one-on-one conversation with him about any issues about the city are invited to attend. That's, I think that's kind of the day, the major update, that's what's coming up. Um, the Parks and Recreation Committee is hosting Extravaganza, which is a Easter event on Saturday from 10 to 12, um, this coming Saturday, the 23rd, I think is the date of that. So that's going on, it's a free event, but registration is required because the room has limited capacity. But it will be here at city hall, uh, in the.
Community room.
Those are the updates.
Those are the updates, solid.
I will give you one more update, the tree committee also met.
I'm sorry?
The tree committee, the city's newly-founded tree committee also met right before this meeting, and, uh, they were, it was their inaugural meeting, right? So they've got a lot of spitball ideas, and one of them is a tree ordinance, so that one will be coming your way at some point in the future, so, you know, just kind of stay tuned.
Are they considering the, uh, ability for residents to purchase trees through the city?
That was one of the spitballed ideas, right? I mean, this is more of a brainstorming, and like, let's get it functional, but yes, that was one of their, that was one of their ideas. We did points order first.
Let's get it functional.
Right, yeah, let's, points order first, right? But yes, that, that was definitely one of their ideas, so. Stay tuned for homework from the tree committee.
Gotcha. Well, if there's no other general communications, we're at the adjournment. If there's a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn the meeting. I second that.
Meeting is adjourned.